I've got one. I'll show you if you want it. It's a roll. In Ireland.
Good to go?
Uh, one second and we are, yeah, we are good to go.
Is that one going?
Thank you. Um, I would call the October 8th, 2020 meeting of the City of Norman Planning Commission to order. Renee, may we have the roll call?
Uh, Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Bayhan?
Here.
Ms. Williford?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Knotts?
Here.
Ms. Zink?
Present.
Oh, and I skipped over Mr. Jean, but he's out of town, so we have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. We have just a few items on the consent docket. They are item TMP dash 157, approval of the September 10th, 2020 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. Item COS dash 2021 dash four, which is a request to postpone on consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Dillard 1991 GST Exemption Trust, Dodson Thompson Mansfield P L L C for Dillard Estates for approximately 79.9081 acres of property located at the northeast corner of 72nd Avenue Northwest and West Robinson Street. That request to postpone is to the November 12th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. And item number four, COS dash 2021 dash five, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Charles and Anita Harmon Pollard and Whited Surveying, Inc. For Harmon Estates for approximately 59.7 acres of property generally located on the south side of Rock Creek Road, approximately a quarter mile west of 60th Avenue Northeast. Followed by item number five, COS dash 2021 dash six, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Ethan Castleberry Red Plain Surveying for Sand Plum Hills for 39.76 acres of property generally located on the west side of 132nd Avenue Southeast, approximately one quarter mile south of Post Oak Road. Does anyone on the commission wish to remove any of the items from the consent docket? Okay, I don't see any requests. Does any member of the audience wish to remove any of the items from the consent docket? No. I don't see any. May I have a motion?
Oh, move.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that a motion from Commissioner Beck and a second from Commissioner Bayhan? Okay, thank you. And a vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you. Then we have one request for postponement. Item number 11, O dash 2021 dash 15, Haynes Estate Enterprises LLC, Richard Haynes Manager requests closure certain right-of-way within Block 1, re-plat of Fuzzles, 2nd Edition, 1230 West Robinson Street, and the request is to postpone to next month's Planning Commission meeting on November 12th, 2020. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Byrd.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Byrd and a second from Commissioner Bayhan?
Yes.
Thank you. And a vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion to postpone carried eight to zero.
Thank you. All right, well, before we launch into the non-consent items, I just want to thank everybody for joining us and let you know that we're going to proceed through a certain order of presentation, which will involve a staff report, followed by applicant report and discussion, followed by audience commentary. And if you have any desire to make a comment, if you are joining us in person, you can fill out the half sheet of paper, write your name and all of your information down. Process those in the order that they are received. If you're joining us online, you can either, well, your options will vary depending on whether you have video capability or not. You can always request to have a comment read into the record by typing that comment into the chat. If you prefer to make the comment, then you can raise your hand and we'll proceed down through comment, feeding in comments as they come in. We request that you limit your comments to three minutes and begin by stating your name and address for the record. And 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 we'll just get into it. So item number six is O dash 2021 dash 12, Ernest Bell requests rezoning from RE Residential Estates Dwelling District to A1 Agricultural, General Agricultural District for approximately five acres of property located at 2001 East Rock Creek Road. And do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Oh, wow, that's a really loud echo in there in the other room, sorry.
We don't hear it.
Okay, good. Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
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 So the applicant for you tonight is from Mr. Bell. He's requesting rezoning from the Residential Estates Dwelling District to A1. This is the existing zoning within this area. You can see his subject tract here is zoned RE. Two more tracks to the east of him, and then there's a larger track that goes around the north side of him that's also zoned RE. Area to the west is the Twin Acres subdivision that is zoned R1. As you may have read in the staff report, this area, Twin Acres, as well as this subject tract were originally planned to be platted and developed, but Mr. Bell's tract and these other three tracks were never included in the Twin Acres, and so they just remained with that RE zoning over the years. To the south of Rock Creek, you have the Hall Brook Edition. Further east, you have larger A2 tracks. And then looking back to the west, you'll see the Deerfield Edition, and then that abuts up to 12th Avenue there. Again, you can see the areas that are surrounding Mr. Bell's property consist of single-family to the east. Again, that property to the north, there's a large, I think it's about 30 acres. But it is currently a vacant tract of land. And then we have the larger acreage development to the west. And then again, the Hall Brook Single Family Development there across Rock Creek to the south. This is the aerial of his property. Mr. Bell and his representatives are here on the call with us, so they've got a presentation and can answer any questions that you might have. But I believe it's my understanding that the accessory building here north of his house is where he would want to grow medical marijuana. That is the request, so we're going from RE to A1 because you can't grow medical marijuana in the RE district. So he needs to get down to the A1 district. Here's just another aerial picture. You can see the properties around the area. So when Mr. Bell had first purchased the property, like I said, it was zoned RE and it does have the use of general purpose farm and garden. And Mr. Bell had thought that that would allow the growing of the medical marijuana. We visited with him and explained that, you know, he would need to get down to the agricultural zoning to be able to do that. So that's why we're here tonight. We did receive some protests in the area amounting to 34.1%. You can see the properties there to the north. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And like I said, the applicant and his representative are here as well to give you a presentation and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? I can't see everybody. Is it possible to put me back on? To remove the screen, Chair? Okay, do we have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, may we have the applicant presentation?
Yes, thank you. This is Gunner Joyce, attorney for the applicant, Mr. Bell. He's sitting right behind me, as you can see, and then Sean Reeger as well at the table. Share a screen real quick. This is a quick presentation. It's going to cover a lot of what Jane just described. Here's the aerial of the property again, right on Rock Creek Road. It's a five-acre tract. We'll kind of talk more in detail, but it's, you know, a large, a large piece of property with a lot of natural buffers to the north, east, and west. Here's a little zoom in of it. Jane showed this as well, with an existing house on the property. That's where the applicant, Mr. Bell, and his wife live. It's their, you know, it's their family residence, so they're going to continue to live on site. And this is existing garage accessory building. They're going to use the top floor of that building for the medical marijuana growing. Here's a map of the current 2025 designation and zoning. Like Jane said, this little pocket is zoned RE Residential Estates. The reason for that is it was thought to be included in Twin Acres, but never got developed that way. So this is undeveloped, you know, single-family residential homes that are not platted, not lot and block, still meets and bounds. This is kind of a line right here, as you can see, that's the urban developed edge out here with lot and block, developed residential neighborhood. And as you can see, sorry about that. You've got A2 agricultural all around it except for this little pocket. We're requesting to go to A1. The reason A1 and not A2 is now that this has been carved up over the years, it's less than 10 acres, so it can't go back to A2 as it originally was. So we're seeking an A1 that would more appropriately fit the site. No change to the 2025 designation. It still complies with the very low residential designation. So a quick summary of the request. As I mentioned, this property is five acres. It has two buildings on it, the primary residence and the accessory building. Seeking the rezoning from RE to A1. No 2025 change requested here. Primary purpose is to get medical marijuana growing as a matter of right on the site. One of the things worth noting, though, is that this zoning will go more in detail on the next slide, but it is not any other commercial allowances. It does say commercial growing because that's how it's defined in the statutes and the city ordinances, but no other commercial allowances on the site. The applicant will be complying with numerous city and state regulations that apply with all medical marijuana uses, as we've discussed before on previous zoning, security, waste disposal requirements. Like I mentioned, no commercial storefront, no dispensary on the property, no processing can occur in A1, and no sales directly to consumers. So if we look at this specific site, and would A1 be compatible here? You know, we contend that it is, and here's the statement from the A1 zoning ordinance. It says that A1 is a district that's intended for land situated on the fringe of the urban area. And again, as we've shown, this line right here shows the urban developed area and the single-family lot and block residential developments. And outside of it, the A2 agricultural and the little pocket of residential estates that never got developed into the residential neighborhood that always was intended to be. If you go down here, A1 is anticipated to be in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. So again, we contend this site meets that intent, and it's in close proximity to the residential and also on the fringe of the urban area. Just to give you a little feel for what A1 uses are, here's, here's the list. Essentially, as you can see, it's, it's single-family dwellings, general purpose farm and garden, some other uses that likely can occur on this site, such as a golf course, country club, and it's too small of a lot. And then you get into medical marijuana, commercial growing, which is the reason they're seeking this request. Also worth noting, all the surrounding areas up here and to the east of this specific RE area are currently zoned A2. A2 contains essentially these same uses with two additional uses. One is additional plants, and the other one is type 2 mobile home. But essentially, A2 mirrors this list. Also worth noting that medical marijuana, commercial grower, is allowed today as a matter of right on all of these A2 lots that touch this surrounding area. One more quick slide here as we go into this specific site. We heard some comments from some of the neighbors about the drainage of the site and protecting the health of the pond. First, the applicant lives on the site and really enjoys the pond. He fishes in it, he canoes in it, so it's his intention to keep this pristine. But just to kind of give some comfort here, this site drains from the north down to the middle of the site, and then again, from the south to the middle of the site. As you can see, this is the elevation. You've got 1190, this is the high point of 1197, flowing down to 1169, and then again, it goes over to the east to 1164. So the natural drainage flow of this site collects right here in the low point and then heads off down to the southeast. So there's no threat to either of the ponds to the north or to the west. And additionally, I mentioned this previously at the beginning, but there's substantial natural buffers in place. One is this large pond that buffers to the north, but also there's dense tree canopy to the east, along the, along the east that protects the building from visibility from the road and then from the neighborhood to the east. And additionally, a very heavy tree line along the west border. And real quick here, we got the, we saw the protest map that Jane mentioned. We saw that late in the day, but put this together, we understand that this residential estate's tract is protesting. But worth noting that A2 surrounds this site to the north and to the east. And as I mentioned, medical marijuana is allowed as a matter of right today. So this is not showing any additional uses that aren't in the surrounding area. And also, this residential home is one of the driving protesters. And the distance between their home and this building, where the medical marijuana growing is going to occur, is over 1,000 feet. That's essentially the same distance. This is about 1,037 feet. To the east, if you go across this residential track and go to the next A2 zoning where marijuana is allowed as a matter of, a matter of right. It's essentially the same distance. We're looking at 1,000, I think 72, I got the Zoom pictures there in front of it. Yeah, 1,074 feet. So a very similar ask in relation to what's already allowed as a matter of right in this area. And again, the residential estates already borders this allowable use on two sides. That is essentially our request, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm going to stop sharing so you can see back to the Zoom squares. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm seeing none. Do we have any, any audience comments? Okay.
We do. We'll get them back to the study room real quick.
Thank you.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'll just step over here.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Burgess. I live at 2861 Twin Acres Drive. I have lived out there. I'm the old timer. I've lived there since the 60s. We moved out there and built our house. My neighbors were cows to the west and fields to the north and the east and all in the south, except for the other four houses there. So through these years, I have seen lots of rezoning changes. And actually, that property they're talking about at one time was rural. So I was a little bit surprised to see that they're asking for the same thing that happened years and years ago. Because now that is entirely residential. No ma, you can look at all those maps and everything, but all of the people that live out there have been in those residences for some time, except for Hall Brook across the street. Over the years, the agricultural number changed. Sometimes it was a one, sometimes it was a three, but anyway, it's all been agricultural at one time. I'd hate to see us go backward, frankly. This is a residential estate area and residences completely. There's nothing along there that's commercial, nothing. There is an OG&E substation that none of us objected to because we thought we're going to have lots of electricity, and you know we have. Sometimes all of Norman has no electricity, but we have some. So that's the only thing that you could even think of as, as any kind of commercial. I tried to get on Zoom today, and I had, Dave Moore was there for two and a half hours trying to get my computer on Zoom. So this is a first for me, and it's a, I have to tell you, it's interesting to get out from under being in this absolute isolation. This is my big excitement since March. Okay, now, Mr. Bell. Dear Mr. Bell, stated that he made a mistake believing that the RE Residential Estate would allow him to grow the commercial marijuana.
Nancy, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your three minutes for comments are over, but I thank you very much for joining us and.
I have one more. I would like to have one more thing.
I apologize, but we, we limit comments to three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know. I timed this at home. The one thing, though, I want you to know, I do think that.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comment.
We do need to have some security about our zoning for all the residents there. Thank you. I do, may I ask a general question?
Uh, no, no, comments are over at this time, but thank you very much for your contribution.
All right.
Do we, do we have more commentary from, from the public?
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. It looks like Mary, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher your last name, probably Puyan. Are you, I think maybe your mic's not working. No.
Mark, they could have used you last night.
How so?
As a moderator for.
Oh, I see.
Um, I guess it might take a little while. Could Mary, like, type her comments, maybe? I don't. Yeah.
Mary, if you have the opportunity to add your comments into the, into the chat section, we can have someone read them out loud. But without audio, we won't be able to hear your comments.
We can hear you.
Hello, connect. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Bill Puyan, and I, unfortunately, we're not together, but I'm Mary's husband and involved with the protest. And two things I noticed is the, in the presentation, and hopefully she'll come on because she's got the notes. But we also, we're the ones that own the, the large 30-acre tract to the north with the pond, and we.
I'm sorry, Bill, to interrupt you, but can you state your name and address for the record?
Okay.
And then comments are going to be limited to three minutes.
All right. My name's Bill Puyan, and I'm at 3140 Twin Acres, but we also have the tract that's, I'm not sure what the address is, but it's the tract that's due north of the pond. That's the 39 acres up, up at the top. And we also have the, there's a five-acre tract up at the northeast corner that we have. And two things, in looking at the topographic map that the lawyers and presentations have, it does show the drainage in the area. But if you look at that map, it goes around and it goes, there's still a low spot further east that goes into the pond. So it's not like it comes off just off the property. It actually goes to the east. If you look at the detail of that topo map, it goes actually into the pond from that area. And there's considerable, not knowing what kind of processing we have, not knowing what we have going on, there is considerable concern about waste and fertilizer and pesticides getting into the pond. And the other thing is the five acres up at the top is RE classified, and everything that the lawyers showed in the presentation showed that all that properties are A1, and it's not A1. Because we just walked the five acres at, and it's 202972 Rock Creek, 24th Street, and it is, it is RE. So that's the two things I want to say, and our real concern, because we have nothing from any presentation that shows how big an operation is, how much water's being used, what is the waste disposal? All these questions, being right next to it as a residential, and we're worried about the pond and using it as a recreational pond and having contamination going into the pond. That's our biggest concern right now. And the other thing is, when you're doing a processing, what about the smell and some other things that happen with it? The amount of employees, what kind of operation it is? There's no presentation on that. And that's what we would like to see to, 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 essentially, our concerns could be mitigated by some of that information. But the main thing is the pond, and what do you do about waste disposal? And runoff and a runoff will get into pond. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any more comments from the public?
I don't see any others. I know Mary did submit a letter, so maybe since we can't hear her, maybe that has some of her comments as well.
And do we have anything in chat? I don't see any comments in chat. Okay, well, we'll move on to, to discussion.
Mark Daniels. I just, I don't know anything about marijuana growing operations. Is there a water discharge from that operation? And does it go in, is the, does the garage have a septic tank that it would be going into? That would be my only question. And would it be overloaded?
Thank you. Can the applicant respond to that question?
Yeah, happy to. So right now, I'll just let Mr. Bell kind of take away what the plan is. Um, for starters, there is zero runoff. Okay, the, the plants are grown in a five gallon bucket. They sit in the dish or in a grow tray. You give them nine ounces of water twice a day. If they soak through the plants, which they don't, it's in the tray. There, it's in an attic. The water is not draining from my attic down into this, up this hill to the pond. I'm going to be polite about this. This is simply nonsense. Um, there's no fertilizer, there's no pesticides here. I'm not doing any aerial spray. It's, it's unhot. It's like if you were growing flowers. With regard to water usage, if they use about 15 gallons a day per hundred plants. When you take a bath in the morning, it's probably about 45 gallons. So if I had 300 plants, it'd be about the same amount of water as what you use when you take a bath. Except for when you take your bath, you pull the drain down and the drain's out. The water goes in the pots. It doesn't go anywhere. There's zero drainage going anywhere. So with regard to polluting the pond, like Gunner said, I walk my dogs out there every morning. I probably fish that pond, swim in that pond, canoe in that pond more than anybody in the neighborhood. The idea that I'm here to pollute the pond, that's insulting. That's ridiculous. There's zero of that going to happen. I wouldn't be so bold, but Mr. Joyce has gone to great lengths to try to explain this. There's some people that simply don't want this to happen. The reality of it is in this place, no one will see it. They won't smell it. They can't touch it. They can't hear it. It's simply, it's a non-issue. With regard to employees, there aren't any. I do this. I grow this. I'm 58 years old, you know, water plants, that kind of stuff. And water use, like I said, the water usage, I have a well. We also have city water from city norm. You know, 45 gallons a day. I mean, if you were to sprinkle your, water your grass, the water comes out of the hose at the point of about 15 gallons an hour, a minute. So if you water your grass for three minutes, that's how much water you've just used. This, you know, the amount of the water we use is a non-issue. Where the water is going is a non-issue. The pesticides, employees, this is all simply nonsense.
And let me add one other thing, Commissioners, if I will, just, we hear this comment quite a bit when we discuss commercial growing of marijuana and that we've heard it before where people suggest that is a commercial use. I think it's been pretty well settled at this point that that is not a commercial zoning such as a C1, a C2, those kinds of zonings. It is called commercial marijuana growing, but it is within agricultural districts. So I think it's a play on words when you hear people suggest this is a commercial operation. Not so. It is commercial only in the extent that it's grown for production of marijuana, just as wheat, cotton, or anything else would be and sold commercially, but it does not turn into a commercial zone.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments from Commissioners?
I have a real quick question, please.
Commissioner McDaniel?
When the, when the plant starts budding, there is typically a smell associated with it. What, what are some of the things you're doing to, to fix the smell or prevent the smell from being, from leaving the facility?
You know, I spoke with Mr. Pyle, the city manager, and also with the city attorney. Mr. Pyle told me a story that when he was the city manager in Southern California, that across the street from the police station in Montero, California, there was a million square foot growth facility across the street. A million square foot. We're talking about 1,300 square foot. And he said, zero smell, zero problem with it. You know, the idea, you know, I mean, how much, how much smell do flowers put off? The answer is I haven't crossed that bridge yet because quite frankly, the idea that someone's going to smell this a thousand feet away in Oklahoma, I think that's a little far fetched.
And let me add to that too, Commissioner, I realize the protesters are, are inhabitants of a property too that northwest. And this, this one structure where the marijuana would be, would be grown, prevailing winds generally, as we all know, come from the southwest, probably if there were any odor, would push it to the northeast away from their home. Secondly, I think what we tend to hear in the marijuana zonings is that the processing is where you really get into issues of odor. There would be no processing here, no sales on the site. So the processing would not occur where you really are starting to alter the, the physical composition of that plant that turns into a serious odor problem. That would not occur.
So, so what you're saying is, is you know, three to six months, three to six weeks after the plant is growing and the budding of the plant, you don't foresee there to be an issue with, with a smell or because I know a lot of the ones that we've asked to, we, they've asked to come in, we've asked them to provide some type of ventilation, some charcoal. There's, there is something to prevent the smell from escaping the facility. So what you're saying is you don't foresee that have, you need, you have the need to have that type of ventilation?
I don't, but if, if that's something, a requirement that somebody wants to put on us to jump through a hoop, fine. I would put out a invitation, anybody on the planning commission that would like to come out to our home and walk the property and take a look at this. Sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. And when you look at it, you're going to walk away and go, this is a whole bunch of nothing. You know, I mean, it's, it's, and quite frankly, you know, maybe we can arrange to, to, to look at a few plans at some other grow operations in the area. I have a neighbor that has S1 off of Sooner Road. We can go walk that and you can smell it and see, see how much, how much odors they can put off. I think that's really more of an argument that people put out forward to keep it out than, than the real thing. I think some people have this odor thing confused with people smoking marijuana in a concert venue. Boy, you can smell it, but, but the idea of a plant putting off an odor that's so noxious that you can smell it, you know, a quarter of a mile away. That's, it's, it's sort of a little bit of fiction.
And let me add one other thing too, as Gunner illustrated, the zoning code allows this in A1. It wasn't just allowed as a matter of right in A2, which is the 10 acre tracts. Note carefully, the zoning code allows it in A1 and as Gunner illustrated to you, that is anticipated to be really adjacent to the urban fringe of housing.
And I would throw this out too. When, when someone says that you're allowed to do general purpose farming gardening, what type of odors would come from that? And is this odor really any, any, any more or any worse than what you would get with general purpose farming gardening? You know, if I was to, to back my tractor up and plow up the back three acres and put in some corn and, and bring in some fertilizer, some chicken litter, it, you know, you got, you got your choice of smelling some plants or a little chick litter, which you think you're going to pick? And I mean, this doesn't even come lukewarm to, to, to what, what is typically happening with general purpose farming gardening.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Bird, I'll make a motion to approve.
Willoughby.
A second.
Second.
Oh, we have a, an vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Mr. Beck, you're on mute.
No.
Ms. Bayham?
No.
Ms. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried five to three.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for item number 7A O-2021-8. Blue and Associates PA, on behalf of America's Car Mart, requests a site plan amendment to the site plan adopted in ordinance number O-0304-33 for property currently zoned C2, general commercial district and located at 512 North Interstate Drive. And item number 7B, PP-2021-1, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Wireglass Development LLC, Blue and Associates PA for Car Mart for approximately 2.98 acres of property generally located on the west side of North Interstate Drive, approximately a half mile north of Main Street at 512 North Interstate Drive. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, we just noticed the chat from the last item.
Yeah, the comments were closed at the time the chats came in.
Oh, okay. Woo, I was like, oh gosh, that's my fault. Okay. Sorry, I'm holding it up. Okay. Okay, um, the applicant for this item is Blue and Associates on behalf of America's Car Mart. And they are applying for an amendment of a site plan in consideration of a preliminary plat for Car Mart at 512 North Interstate Drive. The zoning is currently C2. And when this was adopted in 2003, the council at that time adopted the zoning with special conditions. So it was meant to be a parking lot for Big Reds, which is located just to the south. Um, and it's not typically done to adopt the straight zoning with conditions like they did, but, um, so in order to put a building on this lot and use it for a different purpose, they have to come back and amend the site plan, but it's still going to be C2. And then it's surrounded by commercial, to the south is the planned unit development for Big Reds and then to the west is R1. Um, and then pretty much in all directions, it's commercial and then I-35 is obviously just to the east. And then in the, on the west is single family. This is an aerial. Right now, the lot is vacant. Um, the previous site plan was never developed. Obviously. Um, so this is the, the site right now. That's the southern edge with Big Red. I'm looking south. Looking north with Yamata on the north. And so I was looking straight into the sun. So this isn't the best picture, but that's looking east across I-35. Um, here we have the preliminary plat. The site development plan. There is a pipeline easement straight through the middle. There's a 50 foot easement and then the pipeline company requires 25 extra feet on each side. So it's 100 feet total and they have arranged their site plan to accommodate that. And then we did receive one protest letter for 1.8% protest within the notification area. Um, we do have a representative from the applicant on the call and then I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from Commissioner first off? Can, can you take, can you remove the screenshot?
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
There you go.
Okay, do we have any questions from Commissioners?
Mark Daniels again. Sorry, I'm new at this. So if we approve this, do those special conditions go away?
So, um, they do have the site plan, sorry.
The ones that were approved originally in 2003 or whatever.
Yeah, they would, um, be gone. It would just be subject to development of the site plan that they submitted that goes with their preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other, other questions for staff from Commissioners? Um, seeing none, may we have the applicant presentation?
Yeah, this is George DuKane with Blue and Associates. I'm going to share my screen real quick. It's, you already saw this, but this is the car mark that we're planning on developing. The lot two block one, that is a conceptual one for future. What we're doing is to meet city standards. We're doing a, proposing a shared access drive on that lot. The car mart itself sits 25 feet away or 50 feet away from the actual gas line. And it's showing that my connection is unstable, so please let me know if you can't hear me. But the car mart and you know, we're going to have a, a, a building and a detail shop and a future expansion right behind the main car mart building that you could probably see on this. The, it'll be just a standard parking lot. We, we expect to have most of our, we're going to have most of our display property up in the front. The detail shop is used for mainly cleaning of the cars. We will have a few offices inside that detail shop and this parking in the back is for employees. It is going to be protected by a, by a pipe rail fence, so we don't expect any customers to go into the back area over there. We are showing a fence in the back to kind of screen from the residential area. We don't really want anybody in that product area anyways. But if you have any other questions, Timothy Allen is on the call. If he is with Car Mart, he is their representative. I am with Blue and Associates. My name is George DuKane. And if you have any questions, we will be here for you and stop sharing.
Thank you, George. Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Bird, I have a question. Can you just confirm the space from the back of the shop to the property line? And that measured distance, is it 57 feet?
37 feet.
And do you have an approximate height for your building that's going to be there?
It's a one-story building. Timothy Allen may have the height. I don't believe it's much more than, you know, 13, 14 feet. It, like I said, it's a one, one-story building back there. I'm not exactly sure on the height.
And then as far as lighting in the back behind the building and by the employee parking, are you going to have any like mounted pole lights that you're extending in there?
Well, we'll probably have security lighting, but we will definitely make sure that it's pointed away from any residential areas. We don't want the lighting intruding into their backyards.
We had a lighting ordinance in Norman that is zero, has cut off at all property lines. It's been, that's been in use for at least six or eight years. So no building can have any light overflow into someone else's property.
Perfect.
Thank you. That was a comment from Commissioner Beck.
Mark Daniels again, it, it looks like a substantial fence in the back. I just can't read any of the text. Is that a masonry fence or just a chain link fence or wooden fence or?
I think we're proposing a wood privacy fence.
I'll ask the planning, is there any requirement, a type of fence from the planning staff in this situation?
Um, they have to have at least a six-foot stockade fence. So it doesn't have to be masonry, but it does have to be at least six feet tall between the commercial and the residential. the residential.
Would, would the applicant be willing to put a more substantial fence back there to appease the people in the back, the residential area? I'm, I'm just throwing that out and I can't make the difference.
That's what we require is a six-foot fence. Why are you asking him to do more than that?
Okay. Good point.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant from Commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. Um, how about discussion from Commissioners? I'm sorry. Do we have any public commentary?
We don't have anyone here. I don't, I'm not sure if anyone's on the call for this item. I don't think so.
Okay, I, I don't see any comments. Um, how about discussion for Commissioners?
Uh, Bird, I just want to say that I intend to vote yes on this one because we don't, it looks like there's going to be a pretty good buffer. Um, I'd like to just be conscientious of any poles for the people in the backyards that they're not going to see, you know, even if it's not technically having a light fill over or something that's going to show in a residential backyard, a big light pole. Um, but otherwise I, I think that there's some good mitigation for sound by keeping the cars closer to the front end and I plan to vote yes.
Well, this is Commissioner Beck. Um, since we have restaurants to the north and car dealerships to the south, um, I was often wondering what was happening to that piece of land. You know, uh, there's lots of examples of our new lighting ordinance that have gone in since that happened and the city does a good job of policing that. Um, uh, if you look at like even the, um, seven eleven on the corner of Robinson and Flood, um, you have ample light on the site, but it's dead cutoff on the property lines and it almost looks, um, low-key just because of the design of those kind of things. So I'm assuming that the city will do what they've done in other projects and enforce this lighting. The, so the people behind won't have that issue. But I'm supporting it.
The, the, the main, uh, problem for residents, which I am one, is that, uh, the loudspeakers and I'll support this because they are not putting in, they've already stated in their, uh, comments that, uh, there'll be no, uh, public address, exterior public address systems that, uh, can be heard. I can, I can hear Big Red and, and, uh, across highway, uh, uh, the interstate at this point at my house. So kudos.
Thank you, Commissioner Knotts. Do we have any other comments from Commissioners? Um, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Bird, I'll make a motion.
Daniel, second.
End of vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
All right, thank you.
Um, for item number eight, we have O dash twenty twenty-one dash thirteen Equity Brewing Company LLC requests special use for light manufacturing and special use for a bar, lounge or tavern for a brewery and tap room located at one oh nine East Tonawa Street, Suite one twenty. Um, do we have a staff presentation?
We do.
Thank you.
You're with me here. Sorry, I apologize. I have to move this so I can see what I'm looking at here. So as you stated, we have the application for, uh, equity, equity brewing, uh, for special use light manufacturing as well as special use for a bar, lounge or tavern. So here's the subject tract. You can see it just east of, uh, the railroad there on Jones, uh, the corner of Jones and Tonawal. This is an existing building. There's a couple of other uses within there. There's, uh, this is divided up into a couple suites. You have, um, you have R three, some residential use to the north, to the east, uh, there's some industrial zoning, uh, looks like some sort of a, a work area that's there to the east of this. We have the boundary to the south and of course we have the, uh, City of Norman, uh, police, post office and so on and so forth. On the other side, uh, the west side of the tracks there. As you can see, the commercial uses, we have some office down at, uh, Gray. So this is just one block north of Gray there. And again, we've got the, uh, off the, uh, city complexes to the west there. This is the site. This is, uh, already zoned C three and as you know, with the C three zoning, you do not have a parking requirement, but there is a lot of, uh, public parking. There's some along Jones and then there's some, uh, the, uh, city parking lots over on Gray. So, uh, within, within walking distance definitely of this, of this proposed facility. Here's the building. This is looking back to the east. This is looking to the north. And this is looking back to the south. Of course you've got legacy, uh, trail over here on the, uh, west side as well. You can see there in that picture. And there's a, a police department in the city complexes. This is the floor plan. You can see suite twenty is approximately fifteen hundred square feet there. And so I just thought it was really interesting, uh, one of the, I know you guys have seen a couple of the, the nano breweries coming forward through planning commission and, and onto city council, but the very first one that I did was in, uh, September of two thousand and sixteen. And at that time, the state of Oklahoma had thirteen breweries. And as of now, for September of two thousand and twenty, we, uh, have seventy-one. So this really is becoming a very, um, it's a booming business and it's a great opportunity for these, uh, smaller breweries that they can actually sell some of their products to the, to the public from the site. Now, we do have, um, the applicants here on the call as well. I'll stop sharing my screen. And, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I believe Suzette is on here and I'm not sure who else is here as well, but they'll give you a presentation and they can answer any questions for you as well.
Hi, everyone. I'm Suzette Grilat, one of the four partners of Equity Brewing Company. And you can see there on your screen Jackie Braun and Lily Braun. And then I believe my daughter there, Hannah Grilat, you can see her name. She's not on the screen, but she's here with us today. So it's, uh, two of us, Jackie and me and our two daughters, Lily and Hannah. And then this is Larry Pickering, who is our designer and, uh, builder. Uh, and there Hannah is, she's joined us. I believe Jackie's going to share just a really short, we have a really short presentation, just tell you a little bit about Equity Brewing Company. And so I think Jackie's going to share her screen so that we can see that. So there you can see, um, our branding, uh, Equity Brewing Company. Um, we decided about a year ago to start working on developing a small brewery, uh, in Oklahoma. As, um, you just heard, it is a growing business. Oklahoma still ranks forty-sixth in the nation in terms of the number of breweries per capita. So we have a lot of room to grow in Oklahoma. Um, and we also have no women-owned breweries in Oklahoma. So we thought, well, this is our opportunity to disrupt an industry that needs some equity. So, uh, as four women decided to, uh, get together and build a brewing company. We all love beer. We drink beer and want to buy beer. Uh, that is, uh, consistent with our values. And so we wanted to provide an opportunity to others to buy, uh, beer from women. And, uh, we also hope to, uh, be able to open the door to other, uh, marginalized communities, uh, so that they have opportunities in the brewing industry, craft beer industry as well. Um, so as you can see there, a little bit about us and about our goals, um, to create great craft beer. We definitely want to create wonderful beer, but we also want to bring equity diversity and inclusivity to craft, the craft beer industry. Um, we hope to collaborate with other businesses and other breweries. Uh, in the process, we've been building those relationships. And we also want to offer consultation services to assist other brewers in building a more diverse and inclusive community. You can see here, our, um, the next slide is our, um, floor plan. Um, as you saw, uh, earlier, the tract of land. Here's the design that, um, Larry has developed for us to build out the space to where in the back there'll be the brewing equipment, fermenters, um, the walk-in and some prep area and the, the necessary sink requirements and all of that. And then in the front, the tap room, a bar with about ten seats and a few additional seats as well. Do you want to say anything about the design or anything or the build outs?
Uh, no, just open to questions if anybody has any. It's, uh, pretty straightforward, pretty simple. It's a nano brewery. It's a micro brewery. So there's not a lot of product actually going to be built here. Um, but it will be a R and D facility, uh, for the future growth, uh, is the goal of this space.
Yeah. So that's about us. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you. And I don't know, Jackie, Lily, Hannah, do you have anything to offer as well?
No, that's about it.
Okay.
Uh, Dave Beck, accessibility. I see steps.
Uh, Dave, on the floor plan, the accessibility to the building is, is on the south side of the building, which comes into a common space. Comes behind the yellow dog, uh, roaster into our space. Uh, there's common restrooms along that corridor. So that's where we're at.
Okay, good. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do Commissioners have any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
I just like the idea of brewed beer, brewed coffee, all at the same place.
That's the idea.
You too.
Yeah, come visit.
So, uh, if approved, what, when do you think you're, um, you'll be ready for business?
Well, it's a long licensing process. Uh, we are just at the beginning stages of applying. There are federal, state and local, uh, licensing requirements for breweries. So we're in the early stages of that. It'll be several months, probably sometime in the spring. Hopefully we'll be licensed to sell beer, but hopefully our build out will occur sometime in, throughout the winter time.
Yeah. We've actually applied and have been in conversation with Landon, uh, Gunn and Bob Christians over at, uh, the City of Norman. And we're going to be pulling our plumbing permits and electrical permits, um, to getting our, uh, sinks in and, uh, getting basically operational so we can start testing the equipment. It takes some, it takes a, a bit of time to run through, uh, and get this, uh, equipment dialed in. Uh, so we, we anticipate the winter being that time.
So COVID will be over and, and we can come and drink.
That's the plan.
Okay.
We'll have a really nice garage door. We can open up and spread out. So we'll, we'll be, definitely be managing that in some way, but hopefully we'll be through that process by the time we get there.
Great.
Thank you. Those were questions from Commissioner Knotts. Uh, do we have any other questions from Commissioners?
I had a question. I, can you just confirm, Bird, sorry, with, if this is in our Center City Form Base Code map or not? I think it's directly adjacent. I don't think it was in the Form Base Code, but if, if you could just confirm that for me.
Correct. This is on the east side of the track. So this is, this is out of the Center City Form Base Code.
And thank you, Commissioner Bird. Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, do we have any comments from the public?
Uh, we had one on YouTube from Patrick Shrink, one oh nine East Tonawal Street, uh, number one hundred. We are a co-tenant in the building and we are so excited and support this special use. Equity will be a wonderful addition to our building and community.
Uh, thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public?
There's no one here, so I don't think so.
Then do we have any discussion from Commissioners?
Uh, Bird, I just wanted to say I, I'm excited about this project and partly because that it is outside of the city center Form Base Code. Um, to see some of the momentum that had already started with what the goals were for that overlay zoning and seeing some of other uses in there. Uh, I think these types of micro businesses, these small, um, compatible to neighborhood businesses are a really nice way to grow some of our culture that we have going in downtown Norman and other areas of Norman too. These are the types of things that will service the, the local neighborhood that you can walk to. So you're hitting some of the walkability goals. Um, we're, we're looking at this building in general has a reduced or, you know, parking amount, but we're also having more people walking from other areas and parking in some of the city parking. So I'm, I'm excited to see these small businesses that could maybe be compatible directly next to neighborhoods and eliminating some of our food island issues that we run into with a lot of large residential developments by having nice complementary, uh, small businesses in there. Um, and reduce or eliminated parking requirements on there that we have our accessible parking and then we also have walkability parking. So I'm going to vote yes on this.
Uh, Williford, I'm, oh, sorry.
I was just going to introduce you. Go ahead, please.
Interrupt you. Uh, Williford, I'm in favor of this. I love the location, the walkability as Commissioner Bird said, but I also just want to applaud you for your mission and what you're doing. I think it's wonderful and I hope to see more of it, uh, coming in front of us in the future.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from Commissioners or discussion?
I move that we approve.
McDaniel speaking.
End of vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Daniels, you're on mute.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, item number nine, O dash twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority requests special use for municipal uses for approximately thirty acres of property currently zoned A two rural agricultural district and located at thirty-nine oh one Chautauqua Avenue. Um, do we have a staff presentation?
Yes. Let me get it up here one click. Okay. Um, so our applicant is the City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority. Uh, they're requesting a special use for municipal uses for, um, the household hazardous waste facility at thirty-nine oh one Chautauqua Avenue. Um, the current zoning is A two and that will remain. It's just a special use. Um, surrounded mostly by A two. There's some I two to the south and then, um, parkland to the west. Um, it is mostly vacant around, um, the property. There's some single family out to the northwest, but then, um, the site is already used for the water reclamation facility and environmental services. To the north is a wildlife preserve. Um, let's see. This is the aerial. And then here we have the site plan. Showing the proposed household hazardous waste facility, the waste transfer station, and then the water reclamation facility. I'm available for questions and then we do have. A representative on the call to, to do a little presentation as well.
Thank you, do we have any questions from commissioners? For staff? I, I don't see any. May we have the applicant's presentation?
Did it too, everybody's doing. Yes, I'm Nathan Menwald, I'm with the city of Norman in the utilities department. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Can you see the presentation? Let me try that differently.
That right?
Apologies for that. Yes, this is for the. The property located on 3901 South, or Chautauqua Avenue. So this is an existing parcel owned by the city of Norman. The existing uses on the site are essentially going to be the same uses moving forward. And the, the difference being on the transfer station property, we would like to put our proposed household hazardous waste facility. The household hazardous waste facility is going to be a permanent location where people will be able to bring their house, household goods that they can't dispose of through normal solid waste methods, they can't put them in the trash can. So rather than having an annual event, we're looking to, you know, provide better service to our citizens and put that building here, allowing them to have the option to bring it year round rather than keeping them at their house until that event. And as Laura mentioned, a lot of the area around is vacant. And this is our existing transfer station shown there, our existing water reclamation facility over off Jenkins. And then south of Bratcher Minor Road is a compost facility, so. And the area in yellow is the property we're talking about tonight. Zoning will stay the same, except we were requesting the. Special use permit for municipal uses. Which is essentially what it's being used for now. Here's a, a, the same arrow that Laura was showing. So there at the front of the property will be where our household hazard space facility, we are proposing to modify the entrance coming in. We think we can get a safer entrance if we come perpendicular from Chautauqua coming in rather than having the entrance to the facility coming in on the curve. The existing transfer station site, we have no proposed changes to the area in red. And similarly on the water reclamation facility, we don't propose to do any changes here. Primary improvements we'll be doing there at the front of the property. She talked about the existing buildings there, so at the front of the property, we are utilizing the previous transfer station location up there on the hill, right there at the property. Feel that that will be a good location for this, allowing residents to quickly enter, drop their household hazardous waste goods off and then leave the site without getting back into the transfer station. Also, that'll make it aesthetically more pleasing when people are driving down Chautauqua, not that there's that many sightseers driving down Chautauqua, you'll have a little better visual sight there with that building being up there on the hill rather than a vacant concrete pad that's there now. So here's a rendering that's not exactly placed on that, our particular site, but just showing in general kind of what the building is look like. Going to kind of how the site will work, people access this building, blue arrows will be coming in. They'll drive around to the north side of the site here. We'll have the door open here where people will be able to drop off their goods. People won't, won't get out of their cars for normal drop offs and then they'll follow the red arrows to, to circle back out. The option would be for people to park if they want, they could come and park at the front of the building if necessary. They'll do that for if they want to swap goods or pick up something from the swap shop because we'll look to reuse as much of the materials as we can. So that way we have less to dispose of. And people will find benefit from reusing that rather than having to go purchase at the store. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
This is Dave Beck. I don't have a question, I'm just applauding yous for finally doing this. We've needed this for years and years and years and years. And so, thank you very much for getting this done.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and comment also, I, we've been doing the annual event for at least 20 years and I've been at at least 19 of them. And it's a very long day and we often have people complain about. Or often had people complain about not being able to do this year round and this will serve that need. So I think it's a great, great new operation for us.
Thank you, that was a comment from Commissioner Daniels. Do we have any other questions or comments for the applicant? Do we have any public commentary? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Unless we'd like to discuss first. Okay, a motion please.
And you all do, I'm, I move to approve.
My second.
Thank you, that was a, a, a motion from Commissioner McDaniel and a second from Commissioner Daniels. And a vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Ms. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
I'm an enthusiastic yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, and item number 10, O dash 2021 dash 10. In ordinance of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 429.1. Sections three, four and five of the zoning ordinance titled Flood Hazard District. To add a definition for base level engineering. Incorporate and adopt the new Federal Emergency Management Agency report dated January 15th, 2021. Eliminate references to the conditional letter of map revision. Allowing for additional information to be considered in certain zones in the absence of base flood elevation data and floodway data. Correct spelling and grammatical errors throughout and providing the severability thereof. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Laura's giving me the nod, so I'll, I'll take over there, let me share my screen with you. All right, can everyone see that? Yeah, it looks like we're good on that, okay. I'm Carrie Evenson, I'm the Stormwater Program Manager for the city of Norman. And we're bringing before you floodplain ordinance revision. It's necessary to adopt new flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps for Brookhaven Creek and 10 Mile Flat. It will involve some floodplain boundary changes in both of these watersheds. It's been an ongoing process that's taken quite a few years to complete. But we're finally to the stage where the maps are complete. FEMA's issued our letter of final determination and now the city needs to modify the ordinance to adopt them. So we stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So with these boundary changes in the 10 Mile Flat Creek watershed, 28 properties will be added to the floodplain. 18 properties will be removed from the floodplain. In Brookhaven Creek watershed, 39 properties will be added to the floodplain and 42 properties will be removed from the floodplain. All of those that were affected by these map changes have been notified and were given opportunity to publicly comment and submit comments to FEMA regarding these changes. We held public meetings on August 22nd and September 4th of 2019. And then, and everyone in the watershed that was affected by these floodplain boundary changes or that had property within the floodplain in these two watersheds received letters from us notifying them of these public meetings and giving them the opportunity to participate. The letter of final determination was received on July 15th, 2020 from FEMA. And so we have to have our revised ordinance in effect by January 14th, 2021 to stay in compliance and to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program NFIP. So we have already brought these proposed changes forward to the floodplain permit committee. They heard these and reviewed these and approved these on September 8th of this year. And then these ordinance changes were submitted to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board as well on September 9th. And so the next step in this process to revise the ordinance to make these changes is to bring this before the planning commission as we're doing tonight. And then to city council for first and second reading. And then after that, they'll be in effect. And we're hoping with this schedule, we will stay well within our requirements from FEMA. So just to give you a brief summary, in the staff report, the, the changes were noted and there was a marked up version of the ordinance. So you could see where the specific changes were there. Since we had to open it up and revise it, we took the opportunity to correct some minor typographical errors. We adjusted the definition of manufactured home to be consistent with FEMA requirements. It, it said 100 days in the ordinance for some reason and it really should have been 180, so we're making that change. We're updating the references to the FEMA map fam, I'm sorry, FEMA map panels or the firms, the flood insurance rate maps as well as the reference to the flood insurance study. We're updating the titles for the floodplain committee members. Some of those change, titles have changed over time, so we just want to make sure they're consistent. And Laura is our newest floodplain permit committee member. So we're very happy to have her join us on floodplain. And then we're adding a reference to FEMA's base level engineering data to allow it to be used as approved data for determining base flood elevation levels in A zones where those BFEs are, have not already been determined. This is a relatively new product that FEMA is offering and should help those folks that live in A zones where there is no BFE determined. And so with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, do we have any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, do we have any public commentary? Okay, I don't, I don't see any. Do we have any discussion from commissioners? Seeing none, how about a motion?
So moved by Dave Beck.
Second.
Thank you, that was a second from Commissioner Bayham and a vote, please.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Ms. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For item number 12, we have O dash 2021 dash 16. 34th Street Partners LLC requests consideration of their petition for detachment for approximately 42.83 acres of property. Generally located on the south side of West Bethel Road, southwest 34th Street, on the west side of the railroad tracks. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, I'm Beth Muculla with the Norman City Attorney's Office. Hopefully you should be able to see that. So this is a petition for detachment brought by the owners and voters of more than 75% of the property. This was submitted pursuant to a state law process. As this says, we don't have a specific city code or policy that establishes this procedure. Our code does specify that the planning commission has a duty to evaluate these prior to city council's vote. So that's why it's here today, but otherwise we're following state law, which mostly placed the burden upon the applicant as far as format and notice. This, like other petition processes, it's similar, it's not identical, it has its own statutory set of statutes. What the city clerk does is it verifies the signatures that are submitted. In this case, it was one owner that owned more than 75%, so it was one signature that was verified. Other legal departments did, or other departments did look in on this before it was submitted. So the state law set out the considerations, you can see them there. It needs to not be platted in lot and blocks. It must lie upon the municipal boundary. There, there's a particular form that must be followed and must be published twice in a periodical before submittal of the signed copy. I did evaluate it as far as the ownership and the signature. Public Works evaluated the boundary and verified that it was upon the, the boundary. And utilities evaluated it from the perspective of service area and it was confirmed that there's no publicly installed infrastructure. So the property is more than 40 acres total, but it's a kind of two parts. The larger part is known as Shelley Acres, it was a Norman certificate of survey. And it's about 38 acres total across two tracks. Both tracks are zoned A2 rural agricultural and it was purchased by this applicant on March 25th, 2020. And this owner is the owner that has brought the petition and signed the petition. The I2 parcel that is added to, it was added for the purposes of making sure that the detached property would lie upon the municipal boundary. Otherwise, it would not have seemed to be compliant with the, with the state statute. This parcel is smaller, it's about four acres, it's owned for heavy industrial use and that owner has had it since 1992. It is not developed. The state law required that they receive publication notice, which appears to have been provided. And. Right, it would have been an island had it not been joined in this action. So here's the map that was submitted by the applicant. And as you can see, if you can see my cursor, that's one of the tracks of Shelley Acres, that's the other larger tract of Shelley Acres. And this is the I2 piece right here. Here's an aerial of the property and you can kind of see those same lines in the property. Upper tract, the lower tract of Shelley Acres, and you could see that line for that industrial piece right there. This is undeveloped and you can see some development up here along Bethel Road. So following planning commission's recommendation, this application would be able to proceed to city council for first reading the 13th. And then it would be scheduled for second and final on the 27th. And between that time, the city clerk will be filing a notice in compliance with state law regarding its consideration. And if approved. The ordinance must be submitted to the county clerk and the Oklahoma Tax Commission for recording. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant does have a representative here as well.
Thank you, do we have any questions for staff?
Will the, will the. Boundary be pinned and numbered so that it's readily ascertainable or will someone have to go through this, this process to, to come up with a a, a real boundary?
I will give a brief response, but also I'll probably defer to Blaine Nice, who's a representative for the applicant. I do understand that they went through a survey process before they brought this action. So that legal description varies particularly set out in the petition itself.
I'm sorry, you're waiting for me. Did that answer your question? We do have a survey, a survey, Commissioner Knott. And I think that, is that what you're asking? That it's been surveyed? And, and whether or not they set pins, I don't know, I'm certainly talk to my client about that, the applicant, so.
I think Mr. Knott might be frozen actually, his screen.
Yes, I probably believe he is frozen.
So will this be unincorporated area after this? I guess.
First of all, Madam Chairman, this is Blaine Nice, 100 North Broadway, Oklahoma City for the applicant. Initially, Commissioner Daniels, it will be, we've had discussions with the city of Moore to allow us to be annexed in. Quite frankly, when we came forward with city staff and Muculla can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know when I talked to some of the staff members, there was some question, they didn't even believe all of this. even believe all of this was in the city limits. I mean, there's this boundary, there's some confusion over it. And um, it does not have any services and NUA is not going to service it anytime in the future. And Moore does have available services. So that's, that's kind of the, the reasoning for trying, but we got to get it de-anexed first before we can even start that process. The city of Moore has indicated that they uh, you know, will entertain that, but they wouldn't have any discussions until we were de-anexed. Um, you know, they're not out looking to, to get any property from Norman or anything. But this, this property where it's at is just in a unique location and has no services and will not in the near future. So uh, and that's the purpose of requesting it to be de-anexed. Uh, staff does support it. Um, you know, you know, Public Works reviewed it. I thought there might be some issues with the, you know, kind of a buffer between the two, but they had no objections. And um, and so I'd ask you to, to follow the staff's recommendation. So, but I don't have any separate presentation at this point because this isn't like a rezoning with a lot of things. You know, uh, Ms. Muckelo did a good job putting that together and I just um, you know, this isn't as sexy as a microbrewery. So, but we're just asking to be, so we can kind of get some services. So.
Thank you. Do, do we have any follow-up questions from Commissioner Knott's?
So, Blaine, nice, uh, nice bookshelf, by the way.
That is a fake, I bet.
The uh, I, I'm a, I wanted to tell you that I, I, I looked this over and I think you missed one. But uh, that'd be a lie. Uh, in the description, the vents and, but I'm just worried uh that the uh adjoining uh properties are going to have some difficulty with, with so many small segments to uh, to ascertain what their boundary really is. Do you, I mean, did they pin this when they?
I'm not, not that I'm aware of, Commissioner Knott's. And I will tell you, the legal description, uh, there was a lot of work on that between our surveyor and city staff, the city surveyor, because this is kind of unique out there. And we had, we had some issues with that and it took some time. So, I mean, we've got uh definite boundaries drawn now. Um, and so I, I couldn't tell you. I, I don't know if they're going to pin it or not. Um, I understand your concern. Um, and I'll certainly talk to them about that.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Mark Daniels, uh, being a former utilities guy, there's no way that they'd get water and sewer from the city of Norman. I would make that statement.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and I appreciate that. That's the main reason. It's not like they were trying to get out, but that's just, it's not going to happen. And in, it wouldn't happen in a long, long time, I don't think. So, yeah.
I move for approval. Commissioner Beck.
Daniel second, sir.
Uh, thank you. Um, just to make sure, do, yeah, may we have a vote?
You lost Commissioner Knott's there.
Oh, Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Ms. Willoughby?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Knott? It's not there. Uh, Ms. Zink?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have any, any, any issues from, from staff um for the commission?
Not that I know of unless you have anything for us. I hope everybody's staying well.
Thank you, Jane. Do any of the commissioners have any, have any comments?
I have a real quick comment. Um, we, we've seen a lot of uh grow facilities, marijuana grow facilities come through. Um, and this notion that the smell of a plant doesn't happen, it's after three to, three to six weeks when the uh plant starts blooming, that's when there is a, a fairly heavy smell. So I would ask that uh the council may look at something uh on that and give us some direction. Um, because if we're going to continue to have these, these types of grows coming towards us and, and there's no mitigation for the smell, I mean, that, that could be, uh, that could be a problem later on. So just, just something to think about.
Thank you, Commissioner McDaniel. Does anybody else have any comments or observations? And then?
Oh.
Is anybody in?
Yes. Um, as a, you know, last time we had the um landmark development uh site for revised PUD and I asked about designing accessible houses. And uh, they actually met with me and went through a number of their houses that they're planning on building there and asked for my input as to what would make their houses more accessible. And I like that kind of builder and developer that's open to hear that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments um to come up before the commission? Then now we are adjourned. I, I hope everybody has a good evening.
Thank you. Bye.